Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the September edition of Leeds City Council Executive Board. I'll remind everybody in the room that this meeting is webcast and welcome anybody watching online. I'm going to start with the formal items at the top of the agenda, so I'll start with item one, please. Alloreni appeals against refusal of inspection of documents?
Thanks, Chair. There's been no appeals received for today's meeting.
Thank you. And on item two, exempt information, there's no exempt items on this agenda. Item three, are there any late items?
No late items or supplementary information, Chair, no.
Thank you. I will turn to the board for item four, and alloreni declarations of interest, please. I don't see anybody indicating. Item five, which is the minutes of the meeting held in July, is everybody happy that they are a correct record of the meeting? I take it everybody is. I don't see anybody indicating, so I will move to the first paper on the agenda, which is item six, please, councillor Hayden.
Thank you, Leader. I am delighted to present this report, which is a report on the Ofsted inspection, which took place in June of this year and was published on the 12th of August 2025. It confirms that Leeds has retained its outstanding rating for overall effectiveness in children's services for the third consecutive inspection cycle. And in order to bring to life this outstanding report, we've got a little video. If we could play that now, please. Thank you very much. So, as you can see on that, it was a very full inspection and the inspectors looked all across. And I just want to say a huge thank you to all the staff, the children and young people, their families, parents, carers, foster carers, all the partners across the city, as well as all across the council as well, because it really is a team effort to look after and safeguard our children. So, the outcome reflects the strength of our leadership, the stability of our workforce and our centre's practice. Leeds remains the only core city to hold this rating, and it's a testament to the dedication of our teams and partners across the city. But outstanding does not mean that everything's perfect and that we don't have areas to work on, and we are very, very aware and working on areas of improvement, particularly around the consistency of our response to neglect. These have been actively, so any recommendations have been actively addressed through our internal quality assurance work and multi-agency efforts. I'd like to note that the LSCP annual report, which follows this item, sets out the partnership's work on the revised neglect strategy, including how we are strengthening our collective response to cumulative harm and lived experience. Ofsted noted in the report that leaders are aware of the areas of development and are taking action to address them. We will always continue to work, to make improvements, to innovate, keeping children and young people at the heart of everything we do. As I said at council last week, outstanding rating isn't an end destination and certainly couldn't have been achieved without demonstrating our commitment to keep going, keep improving and keep doing the best for our children and young people in Leeds. I don't know if Julie wants to speak on this as well.
Thank you, councillor Hayden. Just to reiterate what you have said, it is a significant achievement for a core city and to be the only core city in the country to have achieved a outstanding judgment in three consecutive ILAX. I say that with humility, and that's fundamental, I think, to everything that we do in Leeds is having humility, recognising that it is a fantastic achievement, but there's always more to do. And that's what keeps us on our toes, you know, having that ambition to continue to develop and improve services for children and families right across the city. There are two areas of improvement, and as you would expect, colleagues right across the partnership are already working on those. They are areas that, as councillor Hayden has said, you know, that we were aware of and that we shared in our self-assessment during the inspection. It wouldn't be possible, you know, without our partners, you know. Again, the reports and the inspectors highlighted the strong political corporate support, you know, the strong support from our statutory partners, from our voluntary sector partners, you know, right across the city, from our businesses, our child-friendly Leeds ambassadors. We couldn't do it, you know, without that whole partnership approach. But I want to say, you know, a particular thanks to children and to young people, to parents, to carers, to foster carers, kinship carers, who work with us to give us their voice and their influence, their time, their lived experience, which again helps us to further improve, enhance, develop our services. So, thank you to all our frontline staff, everybody across the directorate, across the partnership, and in particular, thank you to our children and young people and our families in Leeds. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hayden and Julie. Councillor Lam, would you like to come in, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Can I just check you're okay after your little, slightly distracted by your small spillage there? So, yeah, thank you for the report. Obviously, we talked about this at council last week. I'm sure everyone else around the table will join me in doing their best to keep things a little calmer than they got on Wednesday last week. And I would start by reaffirming what I said, which is firstly, to recognise what a difficult job being a director of children's services is and being an executive member and the burden you have to carry of making sure hundreds of thousands of children in our city are kept safe every day when we know, and we'll come on to it later, there are people who want to do them harm, is immense. And so, it's a big challenge, and it's quite right, when things go well, that we recognise that, celebrate, take a moment to reflect on the things that have gone well. And I absolutely join with you in that and congratulate you. When we criticise from our positions, it's because we're willing you on and we want you to succeed. It's not because we want you to trip up and fail, it's because there are areas where we think you could do better. But it's right then that when you do do something well and things are recognised, that we join in celebrating and congratulating you on that. So, without any equivocation, that's what I'm doing on behalf of my group. Other groups can say what they want to say. So, but there are, I wouldn't be doing my job properly speaking up on behalf of the people of Leeds if I didn't point out some of the things that we do need to work on. So, I think what I would encourage is, in the same way that you've been humble in presenting this, that we also need that humility around things like SEND transport, around DHCPs, around post-16 transport for the families of Queensway and where things have not been going well, I'd like to see us recognise those things. And I raised last week the issue of MST CAN, which is the Multi-Systemic Therapy Team, and they rightly get glowing praise in this report and do an outstanding job. And I'm going to repeat my call from last week, that obviously, there was a proposal of this administration to cut that service, which we disagreed with and still disagree with. It was through their diligence that they secured grant funding to keep going, and it's clear from the Ofsted report, it's very unlikely we'd have got an outstanding judgement if it wasn't for them doing what they do. So, I am really keen to hear a commitment that we will bring a report back to exec board to set out how we will secure the future of that service, because that grant funding is not forever. And I think it is vital that we keep it going for those families. And the final question, I have one item that's in the Ofsted report, it's around unregistered care homes and our use of them. What it doesn't say, it says that it's a proportionately small use, but it would be helpful to know specifically in numbers how many unregistered care homes there are, how often do we have to use them as an authority, and equally, are we aware and do we track how many other authorities are placing children in unregistered care homes in Leeds?
Thank you, councillor Lam. Julie, please.
Thank you, Leader. I see and I experience colleagues right across the directorate, colleagues in this room and our partners practise on a day-to-day basis with humility at the centre, and that really reflects our value base in Leeds. You know, if we can't have humility, if we can't have those difficult conversations with each other, providing that high support but also that high challenge, then we won't be in a position to do our very best for the families of this city. In relation to MST CAN and MST more generally, yes, the inspection report does talk about the particular skills that are held within the MST CAN programme. What we're really committed to in Leeds, and again in other local authorities, is to get the balance. So, there's something about having specialist services, specialist teams, which reflect emerging, current, present need within the city. But there's also a real imperative that we are upskilling the workforce right across the directorate, right across the council, right across the partnership in relation to those needs. So, if I give you an example, you know, whether it's our colleagues who are working in housing, who may be having contact with children and families on a daily basis, you know, colleagues undertaking repair, it's about us upskilling our workforce so that we can recognise and identify where children and families may need additional support. We can never be in a position where actually, you know, the responsibility for a particular issue sits with one service or one team. We do have a number of teams across the directorate who do hold some specialism, and again, that's right and proper, but it's about getting the balance. I think what's really encouraging and reassuring is that this was an area that the LSCP executives, so the local safeguarding children's executive and partnership, had identified as an area for the city. And I think, you know, when we have seen the rise in poverty in the city and the impact of poverty on children, when we look at the correlation between poverty, abuse, neglect and then the need for children to become looked after, you know, it is, you know, it's not a surprise, in a sense, that we are now really seeing the impact of that in terms of children being neglected. So, the LSCP has it as a priority. We've done a lot of audit work, you know, cross-partnership audit work, and we are now undertaking a review of the neglect strategy. So, I think we need to see the issue in a much broader sense, a strategic sense, you know, it's an issue not just for the directorate and how we organise ourselves, but it's an issue for the partnership. So, I'm sure that we would be happy to come back and talk about our neglect strategy. I'm sure that we will do that at scrutiny also, once we have that. In relation to unregistered settings, councillor Lam, as you have said, that is a particular focus and a very, very detailed focus of any ILAC inspection, and quite rightly so. What the report in Leeds highlights is the scrutiny of that decision-making at every level, and that's, you know, that's for me, you know, that is, you know, I am absolutely central where we are placing a child in any unregulated setting, then that's my responsibility and I am critical to that decision-making. No child is placed in an unregistered setting without me giving that approval. The report, I think, also highlights that we scrutinise those children, we discuss those children on a weekly basis, we give those children enhanced visits and enhanced support. Again, practitioners supporting those children, it's an absolute focus of their direct supervision. And that is what the inspection report found, and that's what the inspectors, you know, fed back to us. I'm very happy, councillor Lam, to meet with you and to give you some more of the detail in terms of numbers that you've requested outside of this meeting, but we've got that, because again, that forms part of our scrutiny and our oversight, so I'm very happy to do that.
Thank you. Councillor Hayden, you want to come in again, please?
Just to, yeah, reiterate what Julie says, we, in terms of unregistered homes, some of our new homes that we're opening offstead have a time lag, so, but they are our staff, they are our managers, they are our homes, and although officially unregistered, that's because Ofsted haven't got to them yet and because of the Ofsted time, but that's not the case with all of them. If a child or a young person is placed in an unregistered home, the scrutiny and the support and the oversight is on a very high level, including updates to me on an individual basis of each child and young person. So, we keep a very, very close oversight of them, and there is always a plan for them to go into regulated care. As Julie said about the MST CAN, they are an outstanding team, they are incredibly specialised and do brilliant, wonderful work with a focused group of young people. I will do everything I can to make sure that we have the funding and the grant funding to, for it to carry on. However, what we are focusing on is that early help, that early intervention, that means that less and less children will need that type of specialist care in the future, because if we can identify need and neglect early on and focus on that and get the early help, then there will be less, and that's good for everybody, especially the child themselves. If we can get to a stage where they don't need that specialist intervention and that specialist therapy, then that would be where, that would be beneficial to everybody, especially children. Thank you.
Thank you. And one thing I'll add before I move to the recommendations on this report is, mine and councillor Helen's predecessors at some point made a decision that the children's and family scrutiny board would be chaired by the opposition. I just want to recognise, before we move off this item, the work, I mean, I know you were a chair at one point, councillor Lam, and the work of the opposition party chairs of that committee in making sure that the scrutiny board is an effective part of the work we do here, and I didn't want that to go without comment before we move to the recommendations. So, if nobody else wants to comment on this item, I'll turn to the recommendation on page 30, and I take it from the comments that everybody is happy with those recommendations. That's great, thank you. And we'll move on to the item seven, the Safeguarding Children's Partnership Annual Report, and we're going to be joined by David Derbyshire and Chief Superintendent Dodds, please.
So, this is the Leeds Safeguarding Children's Partnership Annual Report 2024 and to 2025. And the report sets out the work of the Leeds Safeguarding Children's Partnership over the past year. It highlights the strength of our multi-agency arrangements and the shared commitment to keeping children safe across health, education, police and social care. The report also reflects the maturity of our safeguarding culture, built on trusted relationships between partners, shared accountability and a commitment to listening to children's voices. It's a strong foundation and one that continues to evolve in response to emerging risks and national reform. So, I'd like to bring in David Derbyshire as our independent scrutineer to talk about this. The report belongs to the partnership, but very much value David's input on this report. Thank you.
David, you need to put your microphone on, please, as we're web-
Excellent. Sorry. I'll start again, sorry about that. What I was going to, I think, you know, the things I was going to say, you've covered a lot of them, actually, in terms of the inspection report, because of course, when you have an ILAX inspection from Ofsted, it's essentially fundamentally inspecting multi-agency work around safeguarding children as well as other services provided by the council. So, a lot of the things you've already heard, really, and I will try to be as brief as possible, given I don't want to repeat what's already been said. I mean, I think the reflection I would have, I'm almost, next week, actually, I, it's my second anniversary of being independent scrutineer in Leeds. And I suppose, actually, when I look back over the two years and over the last year, the thing that really kind of stands out from Leeds is the focus on practice that happens at all levels, including those very senior people who sit here, director of children's services, borough commander, I've probably got his title wrong now, you know, but, director of education, where there would be lots of temptations in other places for them to be engaged in rather more kind of corporate discussions, and of course, they do that as well. But actually, what you find in Leeds, and certainly I find in the safeguarding partnership meetings, is that their focus is on practice and whether the arrangements around safeguarding are actually making a difference for the better for children. And the importance of that is that it cascades down to everyone else. So, actually, you know, the people that they manage then also kind of get that focus on practice, and people at the frontline get that focus on practice. And one of my functions as a scrutineer is to ensure that the people sitting in the safeguarding partnership don't develop policies and practices that are kind of a million miles away from what people at the frontline are saying. So, I meet at least once or twice a quarter with different members of different staff, and I tend to kind of move that around between agencies. So, and I saw children's social care advanced practitioners in Leeds in May, a large group of them, and they were fantastic, actually, in truth, you know, their knowledge and understanding of what will work and what is good outcome for children was just something any local authority would be proud of. But equally, you know, I spent a lot of time last year, because that was, the annual report, it relates up to 24, up to March 25, I spent a lot of time last year with health staff and, and it'll be the police's turn again next. And, you know, what was interesting about the health staff, both in community and in the hospital, was the amount of understanding they also had about the importance of conversation-based approaches. If they had a worry, they could ring, whether it was an early help worker, a social worker, and they knew how to kind of have conversations and disagreements where needed. Didn't mean to say that they always thought that other agencies always got it right, but actually, there was a process that everyone was clear about, and they felt valued members of the safeguarding partnership. And I think that the fact that you're in that position stems very much from the kind of relationships that go on in the safeguarding partnership executive group. So, that's, you know, that's the kernel of the strength in Leeds, is the focus on practice, the focus on relational conversational work. And without that, you know, you wouldn't be quite where you are now. I think the, you know, when you look at the report, you can see, at least in my summary alone, that there was a plan of action or various actions for the partnership to implement last year in 24 to 25, and almost all of those were implemented or were started. Some of them inevitably are not things you do once and they go away. So, there was a self-assessment event, there's more self-assessment to do, there's more contact with frontline to do, to make the partnership more live to people on the frontline, as well as just seeing me, to see other leaders in Leeds walking the talk, really, around safeguarding. And so, there's a variety of things that just don't go away, but actually, all of those actions were started and are in process, if they've not already been completed. The other thing that, of course, that was a real strength last year, in my view, was the decision to join education to the safeguarding partnership executive group. For those who may not know, education is not listed as a statutory partner in the Working Together to Safeguard Children guidance. That's largely because actually, the government finds it quite difficult to know quite who the statutory partner would be, given schools' autonomy. So, but actually, in a sense, what we've had in the executive is a head teacher and the director of education, both members of that group, and I think that's given quite a lot of additional impetus and different perspective to some of the thinking that the partnership has, particularly also, as we, and we're still in these conversations now, as we're looking towards the implementation next year of the children and young people wellbeing bill, and the, and there are contents in that bill around strengthening safeguards of children who are electively home-educated, and there are also proposals around mandatory reporting, which won't only affect schools, but which I suspect schools will probably feel the most, really. So, that's been another achievement, really. I would say that certainly, I would agree entirely with what councillor Hayden said earlier, that whatever status of inspection you have, it doesn't finish there, and that's includes when you've got outstanding, and that's because some of the issues you're dealing with, and particularly around child neglect, just need constant monitoring and constant improvement and constant review. I'm afraid it doesn't go away, there isn't a simple answer. And there's nothing about Leeds about that particularly, that's a national issue. You will see that most children on child protection plans, most children who come into care are actually children who have been neglected or are being neglected at that point. And we know that neglect is a really tricky beast, because it covers so many different things, and because families who, where neglect of children might be going on are, look very similar to families who might need support because of poverty or other issues. And we need to be careful that we don't conflate poverty and neglect too much. Poverty is a stressor for families, but it's not actually the fundamental cause of neglect in itself. The challenge for professionals working with neglect is, of course, that they're actually being asked to assess something which is quite different from every other assessment they have to assess, which is they have to assess omission of care. They're not assessing whether someone's going to hit someone, they're not assessing whether someone's going to abuse someone, they're assessing whether someone, a parent, is not doing enough to ensure that a child, and it's much harder to assess omission than it is commission. And that's why nationally, that's been a challenge for the last 30 years, but it's absolutely right, and Julie and Farah and I have had various discussions, that the safeguarding partnership this year needs to begin to put into place a plan around how could we think about this differently, and we all have some ideas about that, we won't bore you with the detail of that now, in order that we could try and sort of crack that into the future better, even better, because, you know, than is already being done. And all of that, of course, you know, as we go forward, is in what remains and has to be, you know, I would say, you know, it's more and more remarkable to get another outstanding inspection, given the difficult context in which services are working. That context isn't going to get easier, there still aren't enough resources, there probably never were in my career. of how safeguarding arrangements for children are overseen in the partnership. And of course, there is a focus on both best start and family first reforms across the piece to try and promote early help, as councillor Hayden was saying earlier. But again, there's also a national shortage of public sector staff, and all of my colleagues here are managing public sector services where it's difficult to recruit and sometimes retain their staff as well as they would want to. So the context will remain difficult, the challenges remain difficult, but actually, you know, what Leeds has is the relationships, not only at senior level but also at practice level, that will hopefully enable them to get through and continue to be outstanding into the future.
Thank you, David. Julie, please.
Thank you, Leader. I suppose I just wanted to highlight that the work of the local Safeguarding Children's Partnership is heavily closely aligned with the work of the Safeguarding Adults Board and also Safer Leeds Board. We have a day coming up this week, I believe, where, again, we're looking at cross-cutting themes, cross-cutting priorities. So again, it's that much whole strategic think-family, think-citizen approach in terms of safeguarding and ensuring that we're delivering effective early help. I also just wanted to say that the report has been produced in collaboration with, again, partners right across the city, you know, and they've been heavily involved in that. And just to set out our priorities for '25, '26, and those priorities are implementing the national reforms, we're on a huge scale of national reforms, a continued focus on domestic abuse, and within that, you know, children as victims of domestic abuse. Another priority for us is safeguarding teenagers, in particular, looking at those children who are at risk of serious youth violence, involved in child exploitation, criminal exploitation. And then finally, safeguarding through family help and that continued focus, you know, and investment on early intervention and prevention. But I just want to finish off again by saying thank you, because, you know, this report is about partnership work. I've just come from a meeting this morning with businesses in the city, you know, coming together to think about early years and actually what businesses in this city can do to support ours as a council, as a partnership, to give children the best start in life, and that is Child Friendly Leeds, you know, and we should be really, really proud of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Chief Superintendent Dodds, please.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Just really to echo what colleagues have already said, I think, I think three points, really, I'd like to offer in support of the report. I think the partnership and the structure across Leeds, as demonstrated by the recent Ofsted report, is extremely strong, referred to by David as our independent scrutineer. I think the addition of health colleagues such as Dan Sat to my left in the last 12 months has been a massive step forward for us as an exec in terms of those conversations that go forward. David talked in his overview, and the second point I would make around the focus and the importance that we as an exec place around local practice and ensuring that that practice pushes down through all levels of delivery across the service is something that's been really, really key for me this year. The reviews that we have following serious child protection issues, generally, one of the things that is always present in terms of those is around professional curiosity of staff. I think we've made steps forward, both in terms of the partnership training that we've offered this year, but also as well in policing. We have seen an increase in the reporting of child neglect offences, which is linked to a programme of training that we ran as an organisation at the start of the year, and an increase in the number of public protection notices that are now submitted through automatic through our crime and intelligence system, straight into child social care. So a couple of practical examples of how that is starting to increase. Julie referred, and the third point I would make that I think has been a real strength for the partnership but also a positive step forward is around protection of young people. And one of the things that I was acutely aware of when I took up my post as the District Commander for Leeds was the level of youth violence and the involvement of knives within that, within those incidents. We've seen a significant reduction in the use of knives as part of recorded crime. We're tracking nearly 11% down year on year in terms of the use of knives by people involved in offences, and a nearly 18% reduction in knife-based robbery across the city as well. So not just the work of the LSCP exec, but having that serious youth violence element as one of our priorities has really helped to focus the work across the statutory partners as well as the non-statutory partners that we work with. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lam, would you like to come in, please?
Yeah, excuse me. Thank you for the... Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the report, reflecting back actually to when I was the Chair of the Children Family Scrutiny Board. And I think it's fair to say, all was not entirely rosy in the garden of the partnership. And I think I was able to sit here a year ago and sort of celebrate and acknowledge the fact that things have come a long way since then. And it does feel, from what you've said, that the partnership is working well, that it is equitable, that everybody's playing their part and doing their bit, and that can only be a positive thing. So you may wish to comment on that. The other thing, I feel it's important to ask again, I will try and do it in a more appropriate way than perhaps it was raised a week ago, but it would be useful to hear from Mr Derbyshire and the Chief Superintendent from their perspective, what interactions Leeds is having with the National Inquiry into grooming gangs.
David, please.
Thank you, Councillor Lam. Certainly, I can confirm that my experience of the relationships between the statutory partners is a very positive one. They... And I think, actually, don't get it wrong, they don't just sit around and agree with each other, which is important, really. That's kind of why, you know, you engage someone like me as well, because I will encourage them not to agree, because actually, it's important that they're challenging one another, and they do that. They don't necessarily need me alone to do that, but they do do that. But when they challenge, they also find a way of having conversations that resolve that challenge issue. And I think, you know, that's the kind of model that we want our social workers and health practitioners and police officers to follow as well. So it's the same model at that level. And I'm very confident that if I email or call any of the delegated safeguarding partners on the executive group, they will ring me back, they will contact me back, you know, I'm not having to chase that. So, you know, in a sense, that's... There's a measure there that sort of says, you know, they're going to... They take this seriously. In terms of the... I mean, Steve is probably better placed to comment on the National Inquiry issue in terms of numbers, et cetera. The only thing I can add, I would add, is that I know I'm attending a meeting in Leeds, a partnership meeting in Leeds tomorrow, which is looking at how do we... About the steps that are needed to try and understand how well agencies are safeguarding children from sexual exploitation now, because, of course, the case review was great in lots of ways, but of course, it was talking about things that went on 10 years ago or more. And there was no reason to think that there's a problem, but actually, it sort of invites that question, really. And so it's, you know, and we haven't sorted out exactly how we're going to do that yet, but we do have a meeting about that just tomorrow morning.
Thank you. Steve, please.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I think, I mean, I came here today to talk about the report of the LSCP exec rather than grooming gangs and national inquiries. I would offer some reassurance around the structure and the way in which West Yorkshire Police are dealing with reports of such matters. Most of our response is dealt with at a central level, so we have a safeguarding central governance unit that tracks the number of historic CSE-related investigations that are coming forward, as well as ongoing matters. We have a senior investigating officer within our Protective Services Crime Department, again, based centrally through Wakefield, that tracks all of the large-scale investigations that are ongoing across the county. And then individually, inquiries that sit within different localities are, again, appointed with specific senior investigating officers to look through all of that. We are linked in nationally through those structures and are cooperating in reporting in terms of the level of offending that is being reported across the county. In terms of Leeds, there are not significant concerns at this stage around the activity of grooming gangs, as you refer to them. There would be areas of the county that would have more focus around that than here at the moment.
Thank you. Julie, please.
Thank you, Leader. I thought it might just be helpful just to pick out the paragraph from the ILAC inspection report. So this is the reflections that the inspectors had when they looked in detail at the LSCP partnership. So they said, "Strong ownership and accountability of service delivery and quality runs throughout the organisation and across the safeguarding partnership. Leaders have excellent relationships with partners. The well-established safeguarding partnership has been further strengthened by the inclusion of education in the structure and executive board. Together, the partnership has clearly defined priorities that are based on local need, learning from reviews, inspection findings and feedback from children and families." And I would just offer that in providing that, their overview, you know, they are thinking about the effective arrangements in the city, as I've said, you know, for whether it's children suffering neglect, whether it's children involved in serious youth violence, criminal exploitation, sexual exploitation, you know. The feedback, which, again, is reassuring for all of us, is that the partnership is strong in identifying and responding to those issues. Having said that, we are never complacent, you know, we retain that commitment to a learning culture, learning from reviews, from what's gone well and from what could have been different. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. I don't see anybody else wanting to come in on this item, so I'll move to the recommendations on page 50, and I take it everybody's happy with those recommendations. That's great, thank you. So, thank you, councillor Hayden, we'll move on to councillor Harland's paper, the Safer Leeds Annual Update. I understand Chief Superintendent Dodds and Chief Inspector John Whitnif are joining us for this item.
Thank you, Chair. So this is the report, it's a comprehensive overview of community safety activity that's been undertaken in the last 12 months. It updates on progress against the key themes identified in the Leeds Community Safety Partnership Strategy, including antisocial behaviour, hate crime, domestic abuse and serious violence and organised crime. I'd like to thank our Safer Leeds partners for all their work over the past year, and I really do believe that this is one of the best examples of partnership working, and I'm very proud of everything that we've achieved together. If you've read the report, you'll know that there have been areas of success such as Lasbat Proactive Patrols, the Dewsbury Road Problem Solving Group, Hate Crime Awareness Week, and our continued work around tackling violence against women and girls. And of course, the success of Clearhold Building Hairhills, where we have seen a 13% reduction in all crime and a 50% reduction in the most serious crime, with a 60% reduction in drug trafficking or supply. I'd like to say thanks to all of those, our staff and partners who have been involved in the work over the past 12 months on that. But there are also areas that we recognise that there's more to do, for example, improving our reach into minoritised communities when we're engaging with victim survivors and vague offences. As Julie mentioned earlier in the earlier papers, Leeds' ambition is to continue to improve in all the work that we do in the city. I'm confident that we'll continue to deliver improved outcomes for Leeds residents due to our intelligence-led and early intervention approaches, as we continue to work hand in hand with our much-valued partners on this agenda. It'd also be very remiss of me at this point not to add my heartfelt thanks to James Rogers for his outstanding leadership and commitment to this agenda, and also the personal support he's offered me since having this in portfolio. James has been a huge part of this work, and his calm and steady presence will be greatly missed, so thank you, James. I don't know if James would wish to add anything, but I'll leave that there.
Thank you. James, please.
Nothing particularly to add to the report, but just to say thank you for those final remarks. This is my, I think, ninth year as chair in the partnership, and it's been a privilege to share what I consider to be such an effective partnership. The collaboration within the key partners that we've got is fantastic. Clearly, the nature of the Community Safety Partnership is such that we're dealing with some very complex and very significant issues. And I think the very mature way in which we do that in partnership in the city is testament to sort of good work and positive work in. So I'd like to thank partners for that, and then just two final thank yous. One is to Paul Money and his Community Safety Team, who without them, much of this work couldn't be done, they're fantastic. And then just to councillor Harland and councillor Cooper, who have been the two political exec members that I've worked with over the last nine years, and your political leadership has been exemplary on this issue for me, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Lam.
Thank you, Chair. I'll just start by echoing the comments about James, and from an opposition perspective, while our job is to be challenging and critical at times, you're always open, communicative, try and make sure we know everything that we need to know so that we can do our job, very respectful of our role as well. So, yeah, you're going to be a tough act to follow, James, and it's been a privilege to work with you in many ways over the years, it's just one of them, so I absolutely acknowledge that. So, turning to the report, obviously, all of the reports that we've had so far are looking backwards, to some degree, at what's happened. And it's important we do that, learn lessons, understand what's happened, what we can do better, but we have to take those things and apply them forwards as well. There are a lot of things going on at the moment beyond our control, a lot of fluid situations, things changing very quickly, and being able to adapt speedily to that is very difficult. And we know that from the private briefings we have, from things we see publicly, just have to turn on the news, there are a lot of concerning things happening in the world that are impacting locally and affecting a lot of communities. And while there's a lot of positive things to take from that, we also have a duty to be able to reassure those communities that their concerns are understood, acknowledged, and that things are being done to address them. So there's a separate point I'd like to come to in a second, but I think the key question, where I'd like some reassurance, is given those fluid situations, how confident are we that Safer Leeds mechanisms and those of all of the safeguarding boards are as strong as they ought to be? And are they working as well together, intertwined, as they need to be?
Thank you, councillor Lam. So I think in terms of the strength of the arrangements, I think they are strong, but clearly, they continue to evolve and adapt to the circumstances that we have to deal with, and, as you rightly said, do change from time to time. And you can write a three-year strategy, and at the end of year one, there's something new that's come along that we need to adapt to and change, and we will do that and we'll incorporate that into our working arrangements. In terms of the way that the three boards work together, the three boards do work closely together, so I meet with Richard Jones and David quite regularly during the year to make sure that we're joining up any key issues that cut across key themes across the three boards. Clearly, we've got a really strong relationship with superintendent Steve Dodds and his team in terms of the police relationship, which is very strong. And in terms of that three-board relationship, we've actually got a session on Friday of this week where the three boards are getting together to look at where we currently are on the current issues and just explore what other things we might need to work on jointly looking forward.
Thank you.
on the current issues and just explore what other things we might need to work on jointly looking forward.
Thank you. Councillor Lam.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be useful, I appreciate the response, it'd be useful just to hear from Chief Inspector McNiff and Mr Money as well, if that's all right, on the same points.
Thank you. Paul, please.
Yeah, thank you. Paul Money, Chief Officer, safer, stronger communities. I mean, I would start, councillor Lam, by echoing the comment about the need to continually evolve and adapt. I think certainly circumstances we've seen in recent times, particularly associated perhaps with social cohesion, and some of the challenges that that's presenting for our communities. And knowing, of course, that socially cohesive communities are less likely to be affected by crime and disorder and protest is perhaps a good example to talk about in terms of that adaptability that we're seeking to show. You know, we are conscious that the environment in which we are now working in has changed in recent times, some might say to a significant degree, in actual fact. I think the strength of the partnership and the strength of the relationships is such that we've been able to respond to that insofar as we can here in Leeds, bearing in mind that some of these issues that are creating issues for us in our communities are international and maybe more national in terms of their nature. But we are working as hard as we can. We are developing and are probably 90% there in terms of a parallel strategy to our community safety one, which is focused on social cohesion. Just conscious that the situation is so dynamic, we wanted to make sure that that strategy not only suits our needs and challenges here and now, but also into the foreseeable future. So there'll no doubt be further engagement and consultation and discussions with yourself and with others politically and across the partnership, as we look to ensure that that arrangement is effective in terms of supporting the broader community safety agenda that we're all working on. So that's, I think, as good and as pertinent an example of that responsiveness and that close working that perhaps is relevant for today. I don't know whether the police colleagues wish to comment.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Chair and councillor. Yes, absolutely, from a policing perspective, we don't rest on our roles, we have got a really effective working relationship together. Some of that comes with challenge, obviously, from elected members and others around some of the work that we do and how effective we've been. But we really strive not to just deliver a one-size-fits-all approach. Our investment in strategic engagement, for example, allows us to really understand some of our emerging communities that there are in Leeds and beyond, and to make sure that we offer an appropriate service to them. Some of our work has been tested, as we know, over the last 12 months, but actually, some of that work has actually allowed us to be stronger in terms of what we do next, where we're looking, our horizon scanning, and that reach that we've got into communities, the intelligence that we can gain from them, really helps us to move forward, to ensure that, yeah, we don't just look backwards and think where we've been effective, we take the best practice from that and apply it moving forward to new problems as they undoubtedly do emerge.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to come in on this item, please? That's great. Nobody else wants to come in? I'll thank Chief Superintendent Dodds and Chief Inspector McNiff for joining us today, and Chief Superintendent Dodds for the safeguarding children's update as well. And I will turn to the recommendations on this report on page 112, and I take it everybody is happy with those recommendations. That's great, thank you. And thank you, councillor Harland, and we'll move on to councillor Arif's papers, please. And item nine, the Leeds Safeguarding Adults Board Annual Report, and we're joined by Richard Jones, the independent chair. And I'll ask councillor Arif to introduce his paper, please.
Thank you, Chair. As a member of the Leeds Safeguarding Adults Board, I'm pleased to be here with our independent chair, Richard Jones, to present the board's annual report. The annual report and the strategic plan are presented today along with the reports from the other two statutory safeguarding boards which we've just heard in the city to give the exec board a complete and thorough overview of safeguarding across Leeds. The presentation of this report also fulfils a statutory obligation set out in the CARE Act for the leader and the chief exec to receive the annual report and take note of its contents. The Safeguarding Adults Board has a vision of making Leeds a safe place for everyone and to report before you set out the range of activity that has been carried out by the board and its member agencies. The board is well supported by its partner agencies with good attendance at meetings and on the sub-greeps. They are supported by a small team of staff who work with board members to produce the policies, guidance, and documents that underpin consistent practice across the city. Richard Jones will say more about this, but I'd like to draw attention to his opening remarks in the report and reiterate his thanks to the vibrant third sector in Leeds who are working every day to support adults at risk. This year, the board has been focusing on learning and has undertaken a number of audits into the quality of safeguarding practice across the city. I'm also pleased to say that the Leeds board has led on West Yorkshire's Safeguarding Week, extending learning about safeguarding across the region. The board also plays a role in improving quality through the development of policies and procedures, and this work has continued throughout the year. Another area to note is the work of the Exceptional Risk Forum, which supports multi-agency teams in their work with people living with highest risks, again, aiding learning and ensuring best practice and support to staff working in these very challenging circumstances. Chair, I'll now hand over to Richard Jones to take you through the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard, please.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, councillor Arif. So thanks for the opportunity to be able to present some sort of look back last year's report, but I really wanted to focus on kind of priorities as we move forward. I'm the independent chair of the Leeds Safeguarding Adult Partnership, so my job is really about challenging, supporting, holding to account the work of partners across the city, and in doing so, and while I present this report, I just want to recognise the work of frontline staff, frontline managers, as councillor Arif said, both in the statutory sector and the voluntary and community sector, because they are the people who are ensuring that Leeds is, as far as possible, a safe place for vulnerable adults. And it's in the context, as we've heard a little earlier, of increasing demand and increasing challenge for our communities, families, and individuals. It's in that context that we're reporting that we've not seen an increase in safeguarding referrals this year, I can talk about that later if you want, but really positively from my perspective as your independent chair, we're seeing more of those referrals moving into what we define as section 42 inquiries, investigations, that get into actually working with citizens in relation to what's happening to them, and then putting in place with them plans that will reduce risk. We are continuing to work with four key objectives. Our starting point is about being citizen-led. A lot of the work we've done in Leeds has got a profile nationally under our Talk To Me Hear My Voice banner. We, secondly, are looking to continue to raise awareness because there's always more to do, particularly around adult safeguarding. We look to, and it's really positive that we're doing this with the other two boards, but we're looking to build citywide approaches to the way we work. And critically, we've got a real focus around learning and improving and seeking assurance that what it is we put into our policies and procedures actually is making a difference to people on the ground and listening to what it is that citizens and their, people who speak on their behalf, say about their experience. So just in terms of the look back, I'm not going to say very much. I think we haven't undertaken any safeguarding adult reviews, we have to formally report that to you, but we've looked at a number of cases where there is learning to be developed, and there are real issues in those cases around self-neglect, which is a big issue, violence against women, and neglect by family members. So these continue to be key issues for us. As we look forward, we are already committed to undertaking two safeguarding adult reviews this year, and alongside of that, we'll be focusing on how we work with ethically diverse communities with the two other boards, building on work that the Adults Board, a safeguarding board, kicked off a year or so back, that Caroline is championing and leading for us. Secondly, we're going to focus on thinking about our self-neglect strategy and reviewing that, because we know there's more to do. We've got a real focus on thinking about multi-agency working and what makes the difference there, and we've got an audit focus that has a real concentration on people and their outcomes. So I think all I'd want to add, Chair, is just a reflection for you as your independent chair. I think the board is a mature partnership, there's good leadership being offered by colleagues from a range of agencies. People are open to challenge and to challenge one another, and there's a real openness to learn and a focus on improvement and what it is that citizens are experiencing. So lots to build on and lots to continue to do as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline, please.
Thank you very much. I'd like to echo what's already been said about how effectively we're working across the partnership, and the voice of our third sector providers being really quite prominent in that. Just to reflect that over the past couple of years, we've done a lot of work, particularly looking at and focusing on quality assurance and learning, learning from safeguarding and safeguarding adults reviews, and how we can improve our practice and how we can ensure that people are kept safe and risks are mitigated against. And we've put on, in place, quite a lot of sort of policy and practice around things like the new self-neglect strategy, and we continue to learn from that. The other thing that I'd like to add is that as one of the sort of key lines of inquiry or what were called quality statements in the CQC Care Quality Commission assessment of us earlier this year, safeguarding was a real important and key factor in that, how we work together to keep people safe, and also people's experiences when they go through safeguarding procedures. And whilst we still await the outcome of that CQC inspection report and the judgment, I can confidently say that we've got really strong work in place, having learnt and developed quite considerable amounts over the last couple of years, and we think that we're in a really good place to demonstrate how effectively we're working on safeguarding matters.
Thank you. Councillor Lam, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Thank you for the report and introduction, always appreciated. One suggestion I have, I know that this is going to scrutiny on the 18th of November. My personal view is it should be the other way around, that it would be helpful if it went to scrutiny first and then came here, because we, best will in the world, we can't get into the same detail in this meeting as scrutiny can, and I think it'd be useful to consider the report with their comments, if that's something we can look to do going forwards. And the one, Richard has addressed this slightly, that came out about the fact there were no safeguarding adults reviews in the period we're looking back at. You alluded to two that are going to be undertaken this year. I wouldn't expect you to share the details of that here, but can I just clarify, are there any others that have been undertaken subsequent to this report that have been concluded or are running at the moment? No, so it's just two that we are now in a position of accepting and deciding need to be a safeguarding adult review, and one is just in the process of starting, the other we're kicking off in about two weeks, yeah. No others, no.
Thank you, Richard. Councillor Lam, please.
Thank you. Yeah, if it's possible, I'd be grateful to be briefed on those privately. Again, I wouldn't expect you to share that here today.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to come in on this report? Councillor Arif, please.
No further comments, Chair, but I have got the next report as well.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Richard. I'm going to turn to the recommendations for this item on page 183, and I take it everybody is happy with the recommendations. That's great. Thank you, everybody. And we're now on to item 10, please, councillor Arif.
Yeah, sure, Chair. So this report outlines plans for Dolphin Manor to be developed into a specialist dementia hub following a strategic review of dementia care across the city. The proposed hub will deliver an inclusive short-stay recovery and rehab model across the service. The service will have two units, the Oaks and the Elms, that will tailor varying levels of support designed around individual needs. Both units will include enhanced clinical input from the Leeds and York Partnership NHS Foundation Trust Intensive Community Home Treatment Team. This development will increase the city's capacity for recovery-focused dementia care from 22 beds to 33 beds. It will also enable a single streamlined dementia hub, simplifying referral pathways and improving access to care. While the model remains rooted in the principles of recovery and short-stay bed-based care, it introduces a stronger emphasis on psychological and emotional support. People living with dementia often face complex and a combination of physical and psychological health needs, requiring skilled person-centred care. It's vital that community-based options are available to support wellbeing recovery and prevent unnecessary hospital admissions. The new hub at Dolphin Manor will address gaps in the local care market, particularly the need for flexible provision for individuals experiencing psychological distress, and for specialist dementia care for those transitioning from hospital with the potential to return home. This specialist recovery-focused approach will help more people regain independence and return to their own homes, reducing reliance on long-term residential care. The proposal aligns with the Leeds Health and Wellbeing Strategy, which envisions Leeds as a dementia-friendly city, committed to timeless, timely diagnosis, inclusive services, and strong community support. The new service, which will include a respite offer, also supports the Leeds Carers Partnership Strategy. Furthermore, this initiative supports the Leeds Dementia Strategy, which sets out our ambitions here in Leeds to be the best city to live with dementia, where people and carers are included in social, community, and economic life and supported by services that work well together. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Caroline, please.
Thank you very much. Just to add to what councillor Arif has already said, this is a really exciting venture for us across our social care, adult social care, and also the health partnership. It's a really creative way of addressing quite a significant gap. For some time, the services that we've offered to people who have dementia, who go to hospital, particularly have a physical need to go into hospital, the offer of rehab and recovery is very, very limited in Leeds, and I'm delighted that we are looking at a model which will address that shortfall and address that gap and give people who have dementia equal access to that recovery support and to do it in a very specialised way. So really, really grateful for this very creative model. I have to extend my thanks to Carla Gallan, who is our Head of Service for Care Delivery Services. Carla has pretty much worked solidly over the last 12 or so months to look at how we can better utilise the Dolphin Manor provision, moving away from long-term residential provision which the market already facilitates to something which is quite unique and specialist. It's a massive, creative, sort of an innovative approach that Carla has taken, and I'm really grateful to her. I just wanted it to be noted, because Carla's leaving us, this is her last week with us, she moves over to another local authority in a really good development opportunity for her. We're very sad to say goodbye, but I just wanted to extend my thanks to her for taking us to this point around Dolphin Manor.
Thank you, and thank you, Carla. Councillor Lam, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'll separate my remarks into two bits. I think the starting point is, I'm sure I'm far from alone around this table in having personal lived experience of relatives with dementia, and yeah, I suspect pretty much everybody has been touched by it in some way around the table and around the city, and this will be a much-needed and, I think, a superb facility for the city. I think from where we are today, it's the right thing to do, it's a good project, I'm happy to support it. It's a good project. I'm happy to support it from where we are today. The second part to say, however, is we also have to accept how we got to where we are today was not a smooth process. And there is still some bitterness locally about how we came to be where we are. I think we found ourselves in a good outcome, but it's still, my question and ask is what lessons have been learnt from that? This is a great facility for the whole city. It started as a care home for Rothwell residents, where their families were close by and could visit. It's evolved into something very different. And that may well be the right thing, but I think the way we got here, there are lessons to be learnt. And so what I'm looking for is some assurance that while, yes, we've got to a good place, let's make sure we do take that opportunity to learn the lessons, acknowledge to the community there and the people, the concerns that they have and what they had to go through to get to this point. And make sure if we're having to do similar things in the future, because like so many of these things, the world is changing rapidly. We have to change our approach rapidly, but you have to do it with people, not to them, and do it very carefully and sensitively. And I'm not sure there wasn't a better way of getting to where we've got to. But with that said, I think this will be superb to finish on a positive, and I'm happy to support the recommendations.
Thank you. Caroline, please.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Leader, and thank you councillor Lamb. Yes, I have to acknowledge that it's been a tricky route to getting to this point. Our starting position was looking at the needs of both our NHS partners and ourselves around people who go into hospital. And we were looking at proposing to use Dolphin Manor as another of our recovery hubs, because we were under the impression that that's exactly what the ICB, the Integrated Care Board, needed from the system. And just to make sure that we were quite a frontrunner in our bid to become the sole intermediate care bed provider, along with Leeds Community Health. So we were acting in good faith to look at re-provisioning Dolphin Manor into intermediate care. The position changed quite rapidly in relation to the budget that was available to the Intermediate Care Board for intermediate care facilities. And therefore, that option was taken away from us pretty quickly. And that's why we had to do some rapid thinking about, well, where else is there a need for us to be able to sustain Dolphin Manor as an in-house service, recognising that we didn't need long term residential care directly provided in-house, because there was such a large supply in the external market. And that's why we've had to look from scratch again at a much more viable alternative for the use of Dolphin Manor. There's something about engaging with the people who are the residents of that provision, family and carers, and local community in taking them with us and taking their views as we start to think about alternative provision. And I'm really pleased to say that that's exactly what we have learnt in putting this model forward.
Thank you. councillor Arif, please.
Thank you, Chair. I just also want to thank Carla for all her work. She's been an absolute joy to work with, and I know this is, you know, a lot of hard work. I wish you all the very best in your next role. And I just want to say thank you for your dedication and support to me as an exec member. It's really made a huge difference, and I wish you all the very best.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to come in on this item? I don't see anybody, so I'm going to turn to the recommendations on page 223. And I take it from the comments, everybody is happy with the recommendation? Thank you, and we move on to item 11, please councillor Arif.
Yeah, Chair, this is the final item, but I'm quite excited to present this as opening remarks. So the report seeks approval from the exec board for the financial contractual and our organisational requirements to bid to host and deliver football, Women's Football World Cup in 2035. In 2021, the exec board approved a framework for delivering major events in Leeds. This framework set out our bold ambition for the city to host a tier one event annually. These events are not only high profile, but they also serve as a catalyst for economic growth, civic providing, international recognition. Hosting the Women's World Cup in 2035 represents a significant opportunity to bring one of the largest single sport events ever to be held here in Britain, but also in Leeds, and cement our reputation for delivering world class events. The scale of the event is huge, with 40 teams participating in the tournament over a 39 day period with approximately seven matches per city. Consequently, the economic benefit for Leeds would be substantial, anticipating at approximately 60 to 70 million. However, beyond the economic case, there are compelling social and health benefits. Hosting the Women's World Cup will allow us to further build on the legacy for physical activity and sport in the city, develop the sporting landscape for women and girls, and celebrate the success and investment of Leeds United. Hosting this event would enhance Leeds' reputation as a dynamic and attractive place to live, work and invest. It showcases our cultural vibrancy, our infrastructure and our capacity to deliver world class experiences, ensuring that the benefits of the event are felt across the sectors in the city. Furthermore, the tournament will require over 20,000 volunteers. Therefore, there is a significant opportunity to work with the current volunteer networks and community clubs within the city to not only be part of the tournament's volunteer programme, but to have a lasting legacy by introducing new volunteers to the network. In summary, this represents a significant opportunity for Leeds. It's a chance to deliver a momentous event that will bring significant economic and social benefits to our city and its residents. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. councillor Lamb, please.
Yep, thank you, Chair. Yeah, and we've had broad agreement so far on things around the table, and I'm not going to change that on this paper. So it's a fabulous opportunity for the city, and we absolutely should be doing all that we can to encourage big events like this into the city. The one, the benefits are enormous. I suspect the reason FIFA are particularly interested in our country for this is that people will turn up. People will be interested, the stadiums will be full, people will want to go to the events. I've mentioned it here before, I'm very proud that my ward is the one, the only one in the city, I believe, where participation in women's football and girls' football is higher than men's. And we'll keep pushing for that, so this will be a great showcase. The one little caveat and concern, and I appreciate we're an awfully long way out from this, and it is not a barrier to moving forward. I'd just like to say, as a point of principle, it always concerns me with these things. When we're talking about a local cost, what they mean is the council is going to have to put its hand in its pocket, while lots of other organisations involved in it will be looking to make substantial profits. Yes, they're looking to grow the game and enhance its reputation, but they will want to make sure they make a profit. And I don't think the council taxpayers of Leeds should need to or have to. We may want to get involved, but we should absolutely not be putting the taxpayers. We're going to find out in the next few papers, we're not in a position to do that. It shouldn't be a reason to rule it out, because I think there are creative ways to make sure that local contribution is delivered. But I think as a point of principle, that would be my one caveat to supporting this, that it's not the taxpayers of Leeds that have to foot the bill.
Thank you. Angela, please.
Thank you, Leader. Recommendation B deals with the financial contribution that says we will be looking to see a Leeds partnership model to address that shortfall. At this stage, it is anticipated that any host city would look to incur costs which might be up to about 20 million. We have assurance from UK Sport that the government will look to meet those costs of somewhere between 45 and 50% of them. But they will be looking for a local contribution. And we have been very clear that we will be looking towards what is that mechanism for a local contribution that can be developed over the next few years. The deadline for confirming the shortlist of venues, so at the minute there are 20 host cities or venues that are in the long list, will happen around about 2028 or 29, where that long list will go down to 16 sites that will then host about seven matches. So there is time to understand what that local contribution is, how we can plan for that over the next, what is, 10 years, and who can be a contributor. And then we'll be looking towards the mechanisms such as the A bid, tourism tax and, like you say, local contributions to make sure that that shortfall can be met.
Thank you, Angela. Are there any more comments on this paper? I don't see anybody, so I'm going to turn to the recommendations on page 245 and over the page. And I take it from the comments, everybody is happy with those? That's great, thank you. And we're now on to councillor Cooper's paper on item 12, please.
Thank you, Leader. And I want to start the first of my papers by saying that all three of the reports in my portfolio are linked together today. And all three of these reports have already been to scrutiny, so councillor Lamb, I hope you approve of that way around. We were in scrutiny on Monday, discussing all of these reports and taking scrutiny members' comments and views on board at the time, as we always do. What I'm proposing to do today is to ask Victoria to run a short presentation for executive board members on the position that we are in and the proposals of how we intend to move forward, particularly around the organisational plan and how we hope to use that as a vehicle to bring together the medium term financial strategy and the Leeds ambitions and hopefully drive through how we can make a difference to to planning the budget and making budget savings through that route. But I'll ask Victoria to go through her presentation first, if that's okay, Leader.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you councillor Cooper. So as councillor Cooper said, it's the three papers within the report that we're going to cover at a high level within this presentation. Around the financial position for the council as at the end of July, which we are reporting a slight increase on the previous executive board report to a 22.7 million overspend. We are experiencing demand pressures in social care, both in adults and health and children's and families. And this is, as we've said previously, a national issue, which a lot of local authorities are grappling with at the moment. There is a lot of detail in the report about those positions and where the forecasts are likely to go through to the end of the financial year. And as councillor Cooper has said, that we've been to scrutiny, both the individual scrutinies for adults and children's, but for the strategy and resources scrutiny, where members have been briefed on the financial position. Councillor Cooper also chairs the member oversight boards for both adults and children's. So there is a lot of member involvement within this position. We've also commissioned an independent review of the children's and families' sufficiency strategy, so that we can look at that profile of the looked after children for the remaining of the year and to see if there's any further actions that we can do to mitigate that position. So on the second report on the medium term financial strategy, this is a five year programme, as we've done in previous years, but it's really changed the direction around where we focus our resources to meet the Leeds ambition and also the organisational plan. We've expected a three year settlement, which as we know, we should receive just before Christmas, which will give us more certainty over the next three years of our funding that the council's expecting to receive. The strategy is around ensuring that the council's financially resilient and sustainable for the future. And therefore, we have put some measures in there around increasing reserves and also around making sure that we come up with some of the short term measures that we've put in place. And that's all detailed in the reports that you've received today. As you can see, the report does go into all the influences that affect both the pressures that the council experiences through additional expenditure, but also the resources that we have available. And that's influenced from an international, national and regional perspective. We do ensure that we achieve value for money through that report, and we are very mindful and reflect the government's best value guidance and also the external auditors' comments within their section reports. There are some uncertainties around the level of resources that we receive, but we will get further information when we get the policy statements in October and the budget on the 26th of November. And then, as I've said, the settlement, the provisional settlement the week before Christmas. We have been undertaking a lot of influence in through the core cities and the work that we do with West Yorkshire Authority, Segoma, and also through the LGA and through members' channels around influencing central government policy on the settlement. So as we can see in the reports, the budget pressure over the next three years is around about 200 million, with 101 million for 26, 27. There is details in the report around the pressures and around the increases that has made up that position. The medium term financial strategy assumes that we would increase council tax by 2.99% for core and 1.99% for adult social care, the preset. And it does contain information regarding the growth both in council tax and business rates. At the moment, it doesn't take into consideration the outcome of the fair funding review because of the uncertainties around that. So as I said, the budget gap for 26, 27 is 101.5 million. What we are looking at is a different way of undertaking how we manage that budget gap position. And we're looking at how we reset and reshape the council and to make sure that we're financially sustainable for the future. We're undertaking this through two interlinked work streams, one through the organisational plan that I've said, which is a change this year around how we prioritise our resources towards the priorities within the organisational plan. But we recognise that this is a transitional year, this year to that new methodology and that new way of working. And therefore, we do recognise that we will still need to identify some direct savings as we move across to the organisational plan work streams. Within the organisational plan, there are four themes that we're looking to undertake. One around revenue growth, which is looking at how we increase the income the council receives and how we ensure that we collect all income that's due to the council and increase those collection rates. So around council tax planning and development income. We are undertaking a review of all our traded services within CEL, and we're looking at the outcome of that and also having discussions around trade waste. The second theme is around prevention and demand management, and this is across three directurates, adults and health, children's and families, community housing and environment. And we're looking at a full diagnostic assessment of those where there are common drivers around increased pressures within those areas and what we can look around integrating more across those services, that we look at a whole family, whole life approach. The third area is around locality working, and we recognise this is less about making savings but more about the way that we work together to optimise that. And that's looking at designing our future models for place based working, optimising our local estate and empowering our citizens and leveraging where we can high quality data, which will help us to drive the decisions that we make. And then finally, around the organisational efficiency and effectiveness. And this is how that we really drive through an assessment around performance and productivity, focusing on our customers through the customer strategy review. review, and ensuring that we review our statutory services and the requirements within there. We'll also be looking at the spans and layers within the organisation to make sure that we're at the right size, and then how we maximise digital through the organisation around artificial intelligence engagement. And those were the key things I wanted to draw out from the reports. However, there is a lot of detail in the reports for people to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. Councillor Cooper, please.
Yeah, I suppose just to add, I was just going to say for exec board members, please, and I hope you've already looked at the detail. There is a great deal of detail in both the financial monitoring and the medium term financial strategy about the figures and the amounts that we are looking at, and how we might be able to approach going forward, dealing with those amounts and what we need to do. I think it's really, it's really good that we're bringing a framework forward in terms of the organisational plan as to how we might tackle that together. And I really thought that it would be good practice to come and bring all those things together for executive board, so you could see the full context of what we're dealing with at an early date, whilst we're still only in September. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Lam, would you like to come in, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yeah, also, we've looked at three papers in one, effectively there. I've got some specific points on each one, if I may. So, and I'm sorry to tell you, we're up to item 12, and the consensus kind of continues. So, and the reason for that, when I read through this, I started to think, it looks very familiar to me. And so I went back and read my last two budget speeches, and realised it contained, it was very similar to the things I had been proposing for the last two years, and you had poo-pooed and voted against. So, but it would be remiss of me then not to welcome the direction of travel. And I think it's the right thing to do. I wish we'd done it sooner, but I think it's the right approach. I think there are more opportunities than were identified on revenue growth. Actually, happy to work with you on that and to look at those things. The prevention aspects, we've talked about many times. I think the locality working is a huge opportunity in two levels. One, around that preventative work, and using local knowledge and experience and resources to really get to problems early. And also, I think there's a big opportunity for the council to deliver some of the basics by local members in their local communities. And I firmly believe, as I've said many times, collectively, it's not a political point, members know their areas best. And I think in the main, we could deliver better services, more responsibly, and for less money, if the opportunity was there. Happy to work with you on that, to try and take it forward. The organisational effectiveness stuff, absolutely. That stuff I talk about a lot. So, yeah, happy to work with you on that. The one thing I think is missing in the organisational plan that should be underpinning everything, I was a little surprised, is around poverty. And it is, it struck me, if you got on a bus in councillor Aris Ward, and set off to my ward in Wetherby, for every mile you travel, your life expectancy increases by a year. And when I first joined the council in 2007, and we were in administration, it was a Labour government, we had the narrowing the gap agenda, and the gap didn't narrow. And we've had 14 years of other governments, and 15 years of viewing the council, the gap hasn't narrowed, and it's showing no sign of narrowing at the moment. To really deal with all of these things, and to deal with the financial challenge, it is really addressing that, that life expectancy gap, and addressing poverty. And again, I think we stand ready to work with you on that, and put differences aside. There's a lot to do. But it's how are we going to get on and do it? How are we going to make this actually happen? Because we talk about it a lot. So, that's my comments on that. I don't know if anyone wants to respond before I move on to the financial health monitoring and the...
Thank you. It sounded like you were delivering one of my speeches at the end there, councillor Lam. What I'm going to suggest we do, you spoke very well, that's what I meant. Councillor Cooper, shall we deal with item 12, and then do the recommendations and work through that way, please? Thank you.
Yeah, if I can just respond to some of councillor Lam's comments, and whilst he would like to take credit for the report following his budget speech, I'm sorry to tell you, that's not the case. That actually, that we've been doing these things for a number of years, but actually, they've been done in individual directorates. This is about bringing things together to work across the council, to help achieve greater efficiency, greater savings, and better service delivery across the council in those things. The organisational plan does talk about tackling poverty and inequality. That's the priorities of the council through the Leeds ambition. And what the organisational plan talks about is how we're going to deliver those priorities of tackling poverty and inequality whilst delivering sustainable financial position for the council. That's the ultimate driving force of the organisation, organisational plan. But I thank him for his other comments. Thank you, councillor Lam.
Thank you. So what I'm going to do, I'm going to turn to the recommendations for item 12 on page 261. And I take it that from the comments, everybody is happy with those recommendations. That's great. Thank you. If members could address any comments on item 13, which is the financial health monitoring. Councillor Cooper, is there anything you want to add? Okay. Councillor Lam, would you like to come in, please?
Yep, thank, I'm at the risk of repeating every other executive board I've ever attended. It's the same story. So around adults and health, I'm particularly looking for a reassurance that this is it, that that is as bad as it's going to get financially, if that can be given, or are we expecting worse to come? And around children's, I am really concerned that this is not reflecting an accurate picture, because it still is based on the assumption that we will achieve getting the numbers of children placed in external placements down to 77 by the end of the financial year. We're four months in, the average across the year last year was around 140, 150, and it was pretty, pretty stuck at that level. We are currently at 170 some. So it has got worse, not better. And the last time we reflected on that 9.2 million figure, I don't believe it properly reflects that. It seems extremely unlikely to me, we are going to hit that 77 number by the end of the year. So I very much hope someone can reassure me that we will. To put it in context, we'd have to have no increase in demand, and we'd have to open five or six new small care homes in the city every month for the rest of the year, to achieve this. And I'm struggling to see how that is going to happen.
Julie, please.
Thank you, Leader. The current figure is actually 156. So we have had a significant reduction, which is very positive. I think councillor Lam, what I would like to do is just to set out some of the activity that is underway, really, and activity which is progressing and progressing at speed. So I'll just cover a few things. So I'll start with reunification. So we have invested in a reunification team that has been expanded. It was featured in the ILAC report that we've discussed earlier as really innovative and positive practice. This year alone, we've reunified 17 children back with family. A father, eight children are currently being supported to return to live with family. And there's ongoing assessments for a further 300 children. Actually, during the inspection, one of the inspectors did feedback to us, having met a child who had been reunified with family, that it was her view that if the child had not have lived in Leeds, they wouldn't be back with family. I'll move on to a new team that we have established, and again, we're continuing to invest in. And it's showing really, really tangible, positive outcomes. And that's a team, an in-house team, which is supporting children to remain in Leeds as an alternative to unregulated placements, which we've talked about this afternoon. The team are active every single day of the week. So every day of the week where they are looking after a child in Leeds, that's a saving of what would have been between 1,400 and 1,800 per child per night. So again, that is really positive outcomes and evidence from that team that they are doing well. In terms of fostering, we've had a really active recruitment campaign. We are currently looking about 50 inquiries a month in respect of new foster carers. We have currently 13 solid, live expressions of interest for foster carers who are wanting to look after adolescents with the most complex of needs. And that comes from a very specific campaign that we ran earlier this year in May. We've got an additional 19 prospective foster carers who are currently going through the assessment. And we've had 10 new foster carers since the beginning of the year. That's quite unheard of, really. And again, we're maintaining a really positive position, and that was reflected back during the ILAX earlier this year. In terms of residential provisions, our own in-house provision, in 2023, we had nine children's homes in Leeds, and adult, back secure children's homes, so a total of 10. By March 2026, we will have 16 new small group living homes. We'll have two additional complex needs homes. We'll have an additional family assessment centre. And as of this week, we are opening new provision, which will support 40 plus young people within the city to live in high quality, supported accommodation. That is a huge amount of additional resource that we are bringing into the system. And it's on that basis, really, you know, that we are confident that we will continue to work towards being able to return children to Leeds where they need to be. We've said here before, you know, we are a large core city, and first and foremost, we need to provide effective help and protection to the children of this city. We're really looking forward to working with external colleagues to come in and really to give us that check and challenge, you know, in terms of the in-year position, but also our sufficiency strategy going forward. You know, one of our, again, that commitment to being an organisation where we have a culture of learning, is looking out, you know, and is working with others to help us to do them. Thank you.
Caroline, please.
Thank you very much, Leader. So we've got in the region of 29 budget action plans that we are implementing in year to try and recover our position and deliver on the savings that we've got planned. Much as you will appreciate councillor Lam, much of our funding is for placement costs, packages of care, and residential and nursing placements. And for the last two to three years, we've seen a considerably higher increase in the demand for those services than we've got budgets for. What we are now beginning to see is a levelling off of placements and packages of care, particularly around older people's services. And that is due entirely as a result of our budget action plans and the work we're doing around preventing people needing care and support services in the first instance, and those that are already receiving services, to reviewing them, and trying to promote more independence and reduce the size of home care packages, reduce the risk of people needing to go into long term care from a hospital bed, and trying to get them into our intermediate care facilities, so that they have a period of rehab and recovery in order to help them to get home. That alongside expanding our social work base, so that we've got more reviewing officer capacity. We're looking at working with people to ensure that we can do more to reduce their level of need. All in all, what that is now beginning to show is a reduction in the number of people needing external placements, residential and nursing placements. And we continue to do our level best on our budget action plans to help us with the delivery of our savings, to try and bring back some recovery over our overspent position.
Councillor Cooper, please.
Yeah, thank you. And just to add to that, we've also implemented a change in terms of scrutiny of the financial monitoring as well. And so now, directors who have got budgets that are overspent will attend the strategy and resources scrutiny board, whereas previously to that, they would have just attended their own service level board. Now they will be going to the strategy and resources board to answer questions on the financial situation and the budget monitoring of their departments as well. So hopefully, that will give an extra layer of scrutiny on that as well, Chair. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any more comments on the financial health monitoring report? Councillor Lam, please.
Yeah, I think it's just worth putting on record the reminder that both directorates received substantial increases in their budgets for this year, to deal with the demand pressures and so on. I mean, I hope you're both right, I really do, and get this in line, because we cannot keep going like this. There's absolutely nothing compassionate about continuing to overspend budgets, because that means we have to make really, really painful decisions elsewhere, on top of those that have already been made. So I don't need a response to that. I think it's just worth making the point.
Okay, I'm going to turn to the recommendations on page 276. I take it everybody's happy with those recommendations. It's great. Thank you. So we will turn to item 14, the medium term financial strategy. Councillor Cooper, please.
I don't have any. I don't have any comments to add to that, Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other member want to come up? Councillor Lam, please.
Yep, thank you, Chair. I think the thing I'm looking for here, a year ago, when we were doing the same exercise, my recollection is, what was set out was, this current financial year would be the really painful year, with £104 million or so of savings to be made. But that would set us up. And while there would still always be in-year pressures, the figures looked much more manageable for the years following. Now, the position is pretty much in the same place again. We've had to make £100 million of savings this year, and it now looks like we have to do the same again next year. And then, so I suppose in two, I'm looking for the comfort, is it going to get easier? Because it doesn't feel like it. And what has changed in those 12 months? That means, where I think if I'm right, Victoria, I'm roughly looking numbers out of my head, I think we had about 30 million to find this year, if we looked at it 12 months ago, if we had the same graph, it was there or thereabouts. And now we're at 100 million. That's a huge shift. That already assumes, as you've highlighted, a 5% council tax increase effectively across the two parts of it. And it feels like that's baked in year after year now, despite Keir Starmer promising there would be no council tax increase if there was a Labour government, another broken promise. We're now in a strange position where I'm more desperate for Keir Starmer to cling on as Prime Minister till the next election than all of you are, I think. But that's an aside. Really, the key question, what has changed in those 12 months to have got us to the position we're in now?
Victoria, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. When we set the medium term financial strategy this time last year for 2627, it is really difficult to see what's happening, because there's so much volatility across, as we've said internationally and nationally. And we were at 40 million for 2627. And we were at 40 million for 26, 27. The increase is detailed in the report, but we've assumed because inflation is staying where it is at the moment. It's been announced today about CPI staying at 3.2 that we've recognised that the salary increases would probably stay around that level as well. And therefore we've put in 3.5% in for pay award so that we don't have a, a pressure. We've obviously done a lot of work on modelling and forecasting for the future years, but there were changes in the trends over last, over Christmas that we'd not seen before, both in adults and childrens. And we've revisited those forecasts and the demand that we're having to put in again for 26, 27 has substantially increased, which has meant that we've increased the budget position. We're also now seeing issues around homelessness, temporary accommodation and the subsidy loss, which we've built into the financial projections, which we weren't seeing this time last year to the scale that we are doing now. So there's been a lot of factors that have changed. We're always forecasting two, three years in advance. And it's, it's not an exact science. We can do it on trends and what we had previously. But as things change and come into account, we therefore revise it. And that's why it's a rolling MT, MTFF. And that's why we revisit it both in September and in December, in February, sorry, to keep up to date with where we are.
Councillor Cooper, please.
Yeah, and again, to add to what Victoria said, the, the MTFFS doesn't make any assumptions around the settlement from the government, if it's going to be more favourable or not, which is the right thing to do. But we've got, you know, a, a, a lot of work ongoing from a, a number of fronts, as Victoria said earlier, through the LGA, through Sigoma and through other member networks alongside working with the government to try and get to a, a better settlement for local authority and, and a multi-year settlement. We don't know what they might well be yet. And so that is not assumed in the financial strategy. So, you know, we could be in a lot better position than we are reporting right now. We just don't know yet until we get those statements, the policy statement and, and the budget statement.
Thank you. Councillor Lamb.
Yeah, thank you for those responses. Just a quick couple of final comments. One, recommendation C is about the dedicated schools grant. But I think it would be wrong not to mention it at this point. I fully accept that is in no way unique to Leeds. And actually, we are better placed than, than many. However, we are in that position where government after government, again, are kicking this into the long grass. And every time they do, the solutions look more and more painful. And I think it's about 225 million we're looking at at the moment that at some point has to be dealt with. And it is a frightening number. We don't know what, what it's going to look like. Every authority has to battle it. But we've got to recognise that that, that is scarily hanging around in the, in the background as well. And then my final comment is, is just, I think it's probably one of frustration on behalf of people. It's not aimed at anyone in particular, but it just feels like we're in a point where we're in a doom loop of paying more and more to get less and less.
Thank you. Are there any more comments on this paper, please? I don't see else wants to come in. So I'll turn to the recommendations on page 316. And I take it everybody is happy with those recommendations? That's great, thank you. And we're now on to councillor's paper, item 15, please.
Thank you, Leader. So this report initially touches upon a complex investigation being led by the West Yorkshire Police Economic Crime Unit. This is because a small number of council employees have been arrested as part of that investigation. The council is cooperating with the West Yorkshire Police Investigation, but is not able to offer any comments further to the material set out in the report. The council continues to follow up progress with West Yorkshire Police to preserve business continuity. And, and this report steps, sets out the steps that have been taken to ensure that business continuity, resilience and safe service delivery through this period. And that includes instigating a planning advisory service peer challenge to provide an independent assessment of development management and enforcement services. The results of that peer review challenge form the bulk of this report, identifying strengths in the service as well as areas for improvement. The independent report sets out current challenges facing the planning service across four broad themes. So those are vision and leadership, service delivery and management, community and partner engagement and outcomes. There is a, a lot here to be proud of and a lot that I hope can offer both executive board and all members of council a huge amount of reassurance. As a portfolio holder, and I was particularly heartened to read the independent view about how the service is being well managed through this challenging period, as well as comments about how planning contributes enormously to the success of our city. And I think it would be remiss of me not to highlight some of the leadership of senior planning officers, not least David Feeney, who's been a, a great leader through this period. And this report, of course, talks about challenges and areas for improvement and provides a number of recommendations, many of which, well, all of which I'll be keen we work at pace to implement. It's really important that the members across the council have sight of this work and opportunity to comment. So Executive Board is asked to approve that this goes to corporate governance and audit, audit committee first as that appropriate place for an initial cross-party oversight. But then we're proposing that further to this, this report, as well as corporate governance and audits work, is then taken to a working group of a joint plans panel so that all members from all parties who have roles in planning have an opportunity to comment and digest this work and contribute to. I shall leave it there for introductory comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lamb, would you like to come in, please?
Thank you. Yeah, well, I'm pleased to hear the last point because that's something that I raised at Development Plans Panel yesterday, that we need plenty of member oversight over this. It's a, it's a helpful report. I'll comment on the, the police investigation in, in a moment. I, I think the, the first question I have around it is, I understand that the report was received by the council early in August, but it was not then formally received, the final version, until the middle of August. And my understanding is there was some back and forth, which would suggest there were some things that we weren't happy with or didn't feel were fair. So are you able to comment on what the differences were from the initial report received and what's in front of us today?
Thank you, Councillor Lamb. The, the main difference was around matters to do with sort of digital infrastructure for the council in terms of the council's commitment to upgrade our IDOC system and the work that we're currently doing to embrace new technology in the planning process in terms of digitisation of our service. It's a programme of work that we've been doing for a number of years now and it's increasingly accelerating. The main issue was around how best to frame the recommendations around digital technology. One of the issues that came up through the engagement with staff on the, the PAS review was around the IDOC system. And the work that we've been doing with our colleagues in IDS is looking at a longer term solution that ties in with other council services as well. Because the planning service isn't the sole user of the IDOC system. So we wanted something that was compatible with a broader approach that the council is seeking to take. So the main issue really was around how best to frame that recommendation. So that was recast in order to acknowledge that there are some shorter term activities and innovations that we're pursuing, as well as looking at the longer term and medium term replacements of IDOCs within the context of the corporate framework that we're pursuing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lamb, please.
Thank you. Yeah, so as I said, I'm pleased this is going to go to a joint plans panel. I think it would be helpful if it also went to scrutiny as, as a separate look. The more eyes on this, the better. And well, one of my frustrations with, not just with this paper, but many others in the past, is that a lot of the recommendations are things that elected members and others have been highlighting for a considerable amount of time and knocked back. And the digital stuff is one I would highlight on, which won't surprise you because, actually, I've highlighted this, not only highlighted it, but went out and found some external companies who are in a position to come and help and brokered some meetings with senior officers and then I was told that, don't worry about it. We've got it all under control in-house. And a lot of these things could and should have been getting addressed sooner. That's not a criticism of you. You've got to work with what you're, what you're given. And in many ways, you do a remarkable job with, with what you're given. But that, that is just a real, a real frustration for me that a lot of this could be, could be done. I think where I would disagree with the report is around enforcement, where it says enforcement is a, is a good service. There are some very good officers in enforcement. There's not enough of them by any stretch of the imagination. And because of that, I don't think it's delivering an effective service. And I, I think there, there's more work to be done on that one. So my final two points, one on the police investigation. We've all sat very patiently waiting for, for this to progress. And have all been extremely mindful in our comments that we do not want to do anything to prejudice the outcome of that investigation or to put at any risk. And so the comments we make have to be very careful in that, that comments. We, we've all had to listen to and receive emails, I'm sure, of all manner of comments from, from people. While that's ongoing, that we can't really respond to. I'm sure it is a matter of fact that we know very little as elected members because it is the council that's under investigation. But my challenge is and has been for some time that it, it needs to come to a conclusion as quickly as possible. It's not in anybody's interests for this to, to drag on. On a financial basis, I believe it's now cost £275,000 to cover the wages of the staff that are suspended so far, which, as we just alluded to, is money the authority cannot afford. The, the one question on that I would, I would ask, it's a difficult one, but I think it needs to be asked. I, I understand internal audits have been looking at what they can in parallel to the investigation. So my ask is if you're in a position to assure us that with what you know so far, there are no planning permissions granted that could be unsafe as a result of whatever has happened.
Thank you. Can I just address the issue I addressed at full council last week when you asked me about this, Councillor Lamb? And clearly, as you said, the police are investigating the council. We work in partnership with the police on a number of areas on this. It is an example of the police investigating us. You're absolutely right. It is an investigation that has taken time. May, I think we'd all probably agree with you, your comments around the amount of time it's taking. However, like I say, we are the subject of an investigation, not leading that investigation. And I think that's the position we are in at the moment. You're absolutely right. The last thing we want to do is put this investigation at risk by making too many comments here. Now, ask officers to address your other points, please. David, please.
Thank you, Leader. Just on, on the point you've raised, Councillor Lamb, about the planning consents and issues around that. I mean, just to give you the reassurance that the Planning Advisory Service, who is an independent agency that came in, found no issues in relation to governance matters or our procedures. And that no time through this process has there been any suggestion that there is systemic failures within the planning service? So in terms of the consents that you've referred to, I'm confident that all of those are safe and in accordance with our decision-making powers and the delegation scheme. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other members wish to comment? Councillor Lamb, please.
So it's on, on unrelated issue. I did ask officers this privately, so it won't come as a surprise that I'm asking it. See, the issue of the Home Office application for Mary Morris House came up at council last week. And I just, the one question I have is, can the officers confirm if the Home Office undertook any correspondence with the council prior to submitting their application?
Not, not with me directly, Councillor Lamb. It was an application that was put to as a certificate of lawful use and development application. It wasn't subject to any pre-application process. And as a planning authority, we're under an obligation to process applications that are presented to us.
Thank you, David. Are there any more comments from anybody on this item? I don't see any comments, so I'm going to turn to the recommendations on page 466 and see if the board agree with those recommendations. See, everybody agrees with those. Thank you. And we'll move on to the last item. Councillor Venna, please.
Yes, thank you, Leader. So this is the presentation of the annual report of the Director of Public Health. Victoria herself isn't, isn't here today, so Dawn Bailey is deputising for her. As you'll be aware from when I've presented this or councillor Arif has in previous years, it's a statutory requirement for the DPH to produce an annual report. And it's been really interesting when we've presented this in different places, like when we took it to scrutiny or when we took it to the Health and Wellbeing Board, who formally sign it off, in that it's quite an unusual subject for a, a, a Director of Public Health annual report. And such has provoked a lot of interest. And I think it's an issue people possibly wouldn't have thought about in that we don't really think about heat as being a health issue in this country where we're famed for rain. And so it's provoked a lot of really interesting conversations. And within the report, there's, there's health, health inequalities impact in that children and older people are more at risk. I also found the issue really interesting and surprising about the urban heat effect, that there's an eight degree difference between Bram Hope, where our temperature monitoring station is, and the city centre. I think the really important aspect of this in terms of how we get the message out, I, I think this is going to, to the Community Committee Chairs Meeting to look at how we get messages out into communities. Because we all think about cold as being a health issue and a risk to people. So residents very kindly go and do shopping for older people when it's snowing, for example. But actually, we need to be encouraging people to think about heat in the same way and thinking about how we support vulnerable people when it's very hot. And that might include developing cool spaces across the city in the way that we have warm spaces for the winter. And we've talked about how that might involve different sectors. So Victoria and I were reflecting in the summer about how lovely and cool churches are, for example, like old churches. So it might be we, we talk to faith communities, for example. We've also talked about how to engage work with the neighbourhood networks, which is already happening because, of course, our neighbourhood networks, a lot of them formed specifically as a response to cold and supporting older people through the winter. But actually, we need them to be thinking also about how we support people through the hotter months. Victoria reflected when she's presented this on what a, what a strange experience it was because she actually wrote the support in the winter. So like the film that's been shown at places like the Health and Wellbeing Board has people in jumpers talking about heat. But actually, it's been really timely because we've had the hottest summer on record. So it was, it's really pertinent that it's, it's been produced this year. I think that's all I'll say, Leader, in my introductory comments. But Dawn and I are very happy to answer questions if anyone has any. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board on this paper? Councillor Lamb, please.
Yeah, I think, I mean, just picking up on a couple of councillor's points. One, the disparity in temperature from outer areas. It is, you'd expect me to say this, I'm sure there's some groans, but it's a very good reason not to build on our green belts and green fields. They, they do a good job in helping to keep, keep the city cool. Then the, the talk of, it's, it's an interesting one. We're in a strange situation now where the modern houses that are being built are going to have the reverse problem to the existing houses. Where for a lot of our residents, the primary concern is how do we keep them warm in the winter? In a, a new modern house, it's the absolute reverse. Keeping them cool in the summer is going to be the big challenge. Once they're worn, the insulation is so good that they, it won't take an awful lot to, to heat them. But getting them cool is going to be a nightmare. And so the challenge then is the mixed messaging you've got to give to people in different settings. And even within the same community, there will be people who need a different message and different support, who are in older housing to those that are in new housing. who are in older housing to those that are in new housing. I don't know. I don't know what the answer is. It's just just reflecting the challenge. It's certainly an interesting report. It's also, it's notable that there were hot summer days where temperatures exceed thirty are an average of two days a year. I think we need to keep a balance in mind because we always say we can't justify the investment in resources for when it snows heavily or is very icy, because it's it's a small number of of days a year. So I think there's work to be done, and it's an important area. But we just need to keep a sense of balance and proportion, I think.
councillor Venna, please.
I'll respond to a couple of points and then I'll hand over to Dawn. So I think the I think the point of the report is that we're in a warming city as we're in a warming climate. So yes, at the moment, cold may be more of an issue, but heat will become an increasing issue because 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 temperatures are rising. With regards to types of housing, my understanding is that the types of housing in our city that are hardest to keep cool are the high-rise blocks and back-to-back housing, which of course are most prevalent in in inner-city deprived areas. The bit that I'll hand over to Dawn in a minute to speak about is is the relationship with planning, the relationship between public health and planning and the relationship between public health and planning on this issue and how we can influence planning applications and developers with regard to keeping properties at an ambient temperature, with regard to managing both heat and cool. The important thing I forgot to mention in my introductory comments was that the this hasn't only been well received when we've presented it round Leeds, but the Association of Directors of Public Health named this as one of the top five director of public reports, director of public health reports in the country. And that's the third year in a row that we've produced one of the best reports. So I just wanted to mention that as a you know, as a congratulations to Victoria and her team for once again producing a really excellent report. But Dawn, would you be able to pick up the planning issues?
Yes, hi. So just to introduce myself, it's Dawn Bailey, Chief Officer for Public Health with a lead role around writing this report. So a couple, a couple of points. Firstly, this, one of the points of this report was about starting the conversation. We've been really good as a city protecting people from the adverse impact of cold. And the evidence is outlined in this report is about, we need to learn from that to help to protect people as we become warmer warmer in this city. I think a couple of other things. The report very much is around protecting those most at risk of the adverse impacts of heat. And so it's about addressing inequalities and addressing those with already risk factors. So so people who are older, people who live in areas of deprivation, for example, people who have long-term conditions. So it's specifically around that. In relation to the work, and one of the recommendations that has been accepted in multiple boards that we've been on is around working with planning and really understanding some of the issues that you've outlined about how do we look to adapt our buildings as we go forward to very much adapt to the changing climate and how we're experiencing that in Leeds and protecting those most at risk. We've had really good discussions with planning partners, but also with academics in at the universities who are really interested in supporting the council in how we look to change some of the building regulations that we have going forward, having those conversations at national level. And another comment to make is that we are working with European partners through the universities about attracting funding for some of what we're talking about, to make sure that we can look to change the way that we work going forwards, both with planners, but but more widely. Finally, the, I think one of the points that councillor Venna made about how we get messaging out to communities. We, again, are really good at this in winter, but we really need to start to change the culture, work through the workforce that we have, build the skills of the workforce so that they're educated and know how to speak to communities about the adverse impacts of heat. And it's not just about the one or two days. Things are changing. The climate is changing. We do have really hot days in summer, but it's not just the really hot days. It's about the accumulative impact of heat. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Arif, please.
Yes, Chair, just wanted to come in. I was at the Health and Wellbeing Board. I'm a member of the Health and Wellbeing Board and read this report. And I just want to applaud our DPH for a really excellent report. And I think it's important that we're having this conversation in this time. And particularly in areas like I represent, for example, Hare Hills, where there's Little Greenery, there are some very vulnerable residents. And it's about conversations shifting and actually awareness of when it's really hot. What are the things in place that messages for those elected members? Our workforce, workforce that's at the front line in terms of shifting those conversations. So I think this is a really forward-looking report. I imagine as a council, we're leading the way, and that's being recognised as well. So I am really pleased to see the report come to exec board. And as I said, councillor Venna, going to Community Committees to further have that conversation. But it's important we're doing this at this point because it is going to be a problem going forward. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Are there any more comments on this paper, please? I don't see anybody. So I'm going to turn to the recommendations on page five hundred and one. And I take everybody is happy with those recommendations. That's great. Thank you, everybody. And I shall bring the meeting to a close. Thank you.